This conference will now be recorded.
So the, between the sewer transfers and the use of the general fund reserves, the city has been able to balance its budget. But of course, this is not a sustainable trend. The police department is the biggest general fund expense. They're the largest department in the city, at least historically have been. And they were the last department to undergo a workload analysis. Public works, community development, finance, all have gone through workload analyses and restructuring of jobs and personnel. This last slide I'll show you was from the, was originally produced in September 16th of 2020, and I believe it was used in the 2021 budget workshops with the council. And this is a forecast that Paul Lewis put together a few years ago. Needs to be updated with some new numbers and reflective of the last couple of years of activity. But again, you can see the general fund revenue in the red line under the general fund expense line in the red. And you can see declining reserves going into the future. And so what I wanted to do is highlight these dynamics going on financially with the city. And just highlight that, point it out to you. So any questions about the financial dynamics? Okay, hearing none, I will turn it back to Chief Richardson.
So this is the budget comparison of the police department that we did 2015 to 2022. And we compared our budget, and it's more importantly, we compared our budget to both Battleground and Ridgefield. And although they're bigger, they do show a trend that is much different than ours. If you look at the police budget for Ridgefield or Battleground, they're both increasing, and they've increased every year since we've been, since from 2015. If you look at La Center's budget, which is the red here, you can see it's been relatively flat. And then it started to actually decline. So it's actually gone down to 1.5 million, which was our 2021 budget. Now we pumped more money into the budget this year, and we brought it up to 2.1 million. And we're finally starting to go in an upward direction. And we're going to talk about why that money is there and what it's there for, and why we're finally going to increase in the right direction. The budget increases obviously are police staffing. Currently, last year, we had eight commissioned officers total. This year, 2023, we budgeted for nine. So we added a six police officer's position, and we also added a part-time records clerk. Remember that part-time records clerk, it's going to be the person that will do all of the processing of body cam video, any other actions, and then making sure that that body cam video gets to the right prosecutor's office or is released through public records request. We have to do a police chief recruitment. That recruitment is, you need to use a professional recruiter. That's the best way to get the best quality applicant. Generally, you reach out nationwide for a police chief. They have to go through a background. You have to pay their moving expenses. And you have to pay them a sufficient salary to track candidates to your area. We have to have a sergeant's promotional process. Generally, you use a third party. So the sergeant's exam and process, if it's challenged, is totally independent. We need to have two police vehicles. Remember, one police vehicle has been up for replacement. And we need to have one additional one. If we add staff, we want to have enough vehicles. So nobody is waiting around the police department, waiting for somebody to go off duty. So they can go on duty, especially if we have a car or two that are down for service. We're looking at the highest inflation rate in 40 years. We're at 7%. So already I can tell you that quotes that I got in the fall for this budget are already out of out of whack, and they've actually increased their costs. So things like supplies, utilities, fuel, and paper, all the things we use in the police department, their prices are all going up. And again, we have to have sufficient recruitment incentives for lateral and entry level police officers. Since Ridgefield's at 20,000 and Vancouver's at 25, and $10,000 for entry level and Battleground's at 10, and the Portland Police Bureau just went to 25,000, we need to have a, some type of recruitment incentive somewhere probably between 20 and 25,000 dollars per lateral applicant. So that's a, since you won't, you don't have those every year. You'll probably use about $150,000 the first year. And then in future budgets, hopefully your budget will decline a little bit because you've already paid those incentives. And you've got people working. Now, people are going to always come and go. So you're going to always have to have a little bit of money in your budget to pay for those lateral incentives. And we have to have money for all the training mandates. As you know, we don't have full deployment of patrol rifles. The reason we didn't is we didn't have the training funds to send to somebody. So everybody has to have patrol rifle training. Everybody has to have a patrol rifle that's out in the field with them. You've got to have instructors that go to instructor schools. So all the things cost money. And so we built money into that budget because we're going to have a lot of people that we're hiring, and they have to go through a lot of training. You've got to have sufficient equipment to comply with police reform laws and police best practices. So we have funding for body cameras, vehicle cameras, and we are due to have some tasers replaced. So we packaged it all into a lease. It's actually beneficial to the city. So that is one thing that we have to have. Obviously, somebody can argue we don't need vehicle cameras. That's fine. That's a $10,000 line item. But it's never going to get you to where you need to go. We're looking at less lethal either 40 millimeter launchers, which were once legal, and then legislators made it illegal, and now they're trying to make it legal again. But they shoot a rubber bullet, so that way you don't have to go right to your firearm when you're transitioning from maybe a taser, and you want to use some other type of less lethal. You have a 40 millimeter launcher, which gives you a lot more distance and a lot more accuracy. And here's future budget challenges that you need to be aware of. Recently, September 20, September of 2021, out of town travel is now, you have to pay for it. So like driving to the academy, flying to training. This is a case out of Tacoma where employees were flying, believe it or not, flying from Tacoma to China to look at some pumps that they were being produced in China. And the court said that they're compensated now from the timely leave Tacoma on a flight all the way to China. And so this is something that is going to impact every union job in the state and especially public sector employees, because you're now going to have to pay money every time anybody travels anywhere. Even if it's on, you know, their day off, or they're flying somewhere to actually go to a different work site. They have to pay the overtime for that. Another new law recently that impacted, this is a 2019 case. It used to be that staffing levels were not subjects, subject to mandatory bargaining. In other words, that was a management right. And cities were allowed to establish how many employees would have on duty at any one time. And for police departments like us, we average about one officer on duty. If everybody shows up for work when we're fully staffed, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Well, this was obviously a case out of the Seattle area where the fire department sued and said, hey, we want to bargain staffing on our fire trucks, and it's a safety issue. And the city lost, and the fire union won. So that's, that's something that's going to be coming back to every police department in the state of Washington. Especially these small police departments, and there are a lot of them throughout the state because most police departments in the state of Washington are small, and if they're lucky, they have one person on duty. So it's not going to be very difficult for a union to argue that one person's not safe and two is better. So you're going to see that coming down the road eventually. And remember that when you arbitrate this, the arbitrator has the final word on this. So when the arbitrator says, yes, one is not enough, you need to have two or three or four. You have to abide by that arbitrator's decision. Another budget challenge is obviously inflation. This, this came right out of a labor seminar I just went to recently. You're going to be looking at wage increases of three to eight percent starting in 2022. And the statute that the arbitrators use expressly lists the consumer price index and cost of living as factors for arbitrators to consider when you go to arbitration over your contract. So an arbitrator can come back and say, you have to pay 6% or 8% or 10%, whatever that is. And you've got to abide by the arbitrator's decision. Obviously, as these departments are competing against one another for applicants, you're starting to see it already that we used to offer $5,000 hiring bonuses and $10,000 hiring bonuses. And now we're in the 20 to $25,000 range. That's only going to increase as everybody starts bidding against each other for the applicants because that pool is very small. And in the city of La Center, we have an overly permissive collective bargaining agreement. All officers may use leave time with no minimum staffing level and the inability to order employees into work. As, in other words, everybody in the police department can go home and take off. And you can't order people back to work, and then we rely on mutual aid. This was because of a settlement to numerous grievances filed by the police association against the, against the police, the city, I'm sorry. And remember that due to these grievances that were filed, the police chief is prohibited from performing law enforcement duties except for handling an emergency call. Does anybody have any questions? I'm going to move on. So we'll talk about recruitment retention challenges. There's a severe shortage.
Excuse me. Raising her hand.
So Bob, I just want to clarify a couple of things. They were not grievances. They were unfair labor practices.
Okay, go ahead.
And they were eight of them filed, and all eight of them, or seven of them, were filed against the former chief. And that's how we ended up with a settlement, albeit not one that I felt was appropriate. But we ended up with this situation where literally the officer could walk off the shift and leave us with nobody to cover the shift. Giving people off holidays and nobody covering the holidays. So, and even though I've heard that it's been said that in the one specific to the chief, it is, it says emergency. Recently Sergeant Olson said, well, this is an emergency when we're not appropriately staffed. That isn't at all what that settlement agreement says. It says we can only do it when it's a police-related an emergency, not a staffing emergency, a police-related emergency. Chris Olson was not part of that settlement discussion and was not a board member in the union at the time. So these were again, eight unfair labor practices. And these resulted in settlement agreements. And some of them, we didn't have choices, and some of them we were successful in overturning. And again, that's the reason we have what we have at this time.
Thank you for that clarification. So obviously recruitment retention, this is nationwide. If you look at police departments, it's actually worldwide. You have England, Canada, they're having the same recruitment challenges that we are for police officers. And we're talking about there's a severe shortage of qualified job seekers in the United States. This includes a lot of high skilled jobs, law enforcement, nurses, teachers, construction workers, truck drivers. And there's about 10.5 billion job openings, and our unemployment rate is roughly about 3.9%. This is another chart. This came from the federal government Bureau of Labor Statistics. This is what's called the labor force participation rate. And this is defined as the percentage of all people of working age who are employed or actively seeking work. This is commonly known as the applicant pool. And as you can see, this pool is declined. And when you get over here, you can really see it. And this, this big large dip was everybody sitting at home, getting paid to sit at home. And it's coming back a little, but it's still trending downward. And again, that just means that we have a lot of least openings because people are either adding positions, officers are retiring or leaving the profession. And then when we reach out and do testing, that pool is getting smaller and smaller. You know, you used to get 200 or 300 applicants for a, at a job flair or doing a police recruitment for oral interviews. And now you're lucky if you get some agencies have gotten two or three. So this is impacting police recruitment. It takes a long time to hire police officers. The average time in the, across all sectors in the United States takes about 23 days to hire an employee. Police officers is about 128 days. And it was actually the longest days to hire out of a list of different occupations that were found in this particular study. Law enforcement, like most professions, we predominantly recruit a millennial generation. And some of those things they expect, they expect a fast turnaround and fast results, which is kind of contradictory to how we, our hiring process is very long and thorough. And it takes quite a long time to get people through. They balance their work-life balance much better than my generation did. They don't like necessarily working rotating shifts. They want off at night. They want off on weekends. They want off on holidays. And policing gets in the way of that. So it's, it's a, not a very desirable job for certain generations. Obviously, media outlets have influenced police recruitment policies at every level. All these sensational news stories about improper use of deadly force. Now, some of them are true. But there's a lot of out there that it goes on and on and on where they're constantly beating down the profession. That is actually taking applicants, and they're actually turning away from law enforcement. If you're not familiar with the Skill Center, it's called the Cascadia Tech Academy. They have a criminal justice program there. Four or five years ago, they take high school kids that are juniors and seniors. They teach them different technical jobs. They have a criminal justice program there. They had to expand it several years ago. They had so many applicants. Since all the anti-police sentiment, their actual recruitment and attendance has gone down 30%. So people have, and that's very bad on 17 and 18-year-old kids because that's ultimately the, the pool that we recruit from. So if they're turning away at an early age, that makes it even harder for us to find those applicants. Let's talk about police reform, reform challenges. Because they also impact policing, both the applicant pool, but also your cost. There's currently legislation that's going through right now. This is called HB 1202. We're trying to track it. But this is actually going to increase the city's liability for injuries caused by actions of law enforcement officers. This is basically taking the Federal Civil Rights Act and applying it to state courts. And this would be, mean that police officer agencies, we would be liable for actual damages, including the cost of reasonable attorney fees. And this will incentivize people to file claims regardless of their merit. I can tell you that I listened to the testimony. And AWC and WCIA, which are the two big insurance pools that ensure cities in the state testified that this will make insurance unaffordable for small cities if it passes. You've got another potential challenge. This is SB 5677. There are some good parts to this bill. It actually is good. It standardizes how you take complaints from citizens and investigate them. And it also standardizes the disciplinary appeals process for serious misconduct. However, the negative part of the job for the city of La Center or the bill is by July 1st, 2025, agencies with 25 or less officers, I'm sorry, 2023 for 25 and over, and 2025 is a year for 25 officers or less. So we have till July 1st, 2025. You have to hire, have a civilian in charge of investigating the complaints, have a civilian staff and investigating authority. Now, you could, you could, under the bill, contract that out. But then again, it's going to be, remember, that's, if somebody files a complaint against a police officer starting July 1st, 2025, you have to have some civilian oversight, an employee or a contract that you can take that complaint, and they can follow through with the investigation. So that's going to cost every city in the state at some point, either 2023 or 2025, depending on your size. You're going to have to hire at least one additional civilian police employee. And another part of this bill, that any officer that's accused of excessive force while on duty, he has to have an in-person interview. Him and also the witness officers know later than 60 minutes after the end of their shift. So that is going to require an after-hours response by the civilian in charge of the investigating authority or contractor to respond out and conduct the interviews. And in addition to that, you're going to have to pay all those officers overtime as they sit their, their last hour of their shift or if they're off duty, waiting for this person to actually come in and do the interview. And this is another one that got good intentions. This is HB 1991. And this is some increases privacy protections concerning body cams. And this is mostly body cam video where third parties, if they're unrelated to the incident, want copies of the video. The defense attorney and the prosecutor, they'll still get the full unredacted videos. But remember, body cam video, anybody can come in and ask for body cam video, any third party. So this allows the police department to do more redactions, to redact out a lot more information out of the body cam video. However, remember, that's going to increase the labor cost to provide those services. So you may have a part-time employee for a city our size. But depending on the workload, you may have to make that a full-time employee. And now we're going to move to the sheriff's department contract unless anybody has any questions about anything I've spoken prior. Okay. Remember, we've been talking to the sheriff's department for almost a year about having a contract. And we wanted to do a comparison of what it, what are the benefits to having law enforcement services with the county versus the city? And for the city of La Center, obviously, there's the question of a long-term sustainability for a police department. Our revenue in this city is actually decreasing. And there's, there are more and more impacts on our budget and more and more things that we have to spend money on that are taking monies that have to be used all over the city, but taking them out of either the city's hands or the police department's hands. Increasing cost of equipment, training, and staffing to meet police reform legislation. Again, we don't have, we have limited career opportunities that impact recruitment and retention. So what happens is we're going to hire police officers. We're going to give, attract them with a $25,000 hiring bonus. We're going to determine whether that money is spent over a period of two to three or four or five years. And then at the end of that time, these officers are going to start looking at other agencies because by then they've realized that there's nothing else to do but work patrol. And literally, they could obviously go to another agency and collect another hiring bonus. So I think that's where you're going to see the world go in the future is you're going to have officers that are going to move every three to five years and collect hiring bonuses as they go. We have a very low call demand and a lot of free time for our officers, which is good in the sense of city safe. But it's not affordable for a city that has such a call, a small call like us. We can't compare, compete to other agencies. Our officers are going to, the guys that want to go out and do police work, they're going to get bored, the guys and girls. And they're going to go somewhere else. And remember, police departments are high risk, high liability. You have to have a lot of funding, adequate funding. You've got to meet all the training demands, all the staffing demands, all the police reform demands. And you're in an industry, if these bills pass that we're talking about, you're going to have more liability, and you're going to have more claims that you're going to have to defend. And remember, even if you're right in a lawsuit, it costs money to defend the lawsuit. And so you're paying either attorneys or you're paying insurance premiums. The positive for CISO, obviously, under this dual funding model, they have a much more long-term sustainability. They've got a lot better resources. They can leverage recruitment, retention. They, they can do those kinds of things. We don't have the ability to do that. They have a much more robust training system than we do. They have numerous career opportunities. And again, they have a much more capacity to recruit, retain employees. And call the man in the La Center beat would provide a more balanced service demand when you compare it to staffing cost of individual agencies. In other words, northwest part of the county where we are right now, under the shared beat plan, they, everybody would get long-term better service. And the very important thing to talk about is Clark County assumes all liability for law enforcement services except for city ordinance enforcement. So they have a much greater ability to absorb the cost related to litigation. And everybody asks, okay, what is the La Center beat, the shared beat? This is what it is. We created a new beat here. We've cut a line across here. And this is a beat that would be fully staffed, full-time by sheriff's deputies. And we would, if you look at the call load down here on the left side of the slide, it's pretty balanced. CISO, if you take this whole beat, they would have 51% of the calls. We would have 49% of the calls. And so it would work out to be a win-win for everybody. And what does law enforcement look like in the partnership? We would have 24-hour day, seven-day week, 365-day year patrol coverage with overlapping shifts with guaranteed staffing. If somebody calls in sick, somebody goes home, and somebody doesn't want to come to work, whatever the reason, we would have coverage here, and it would be required for them to cover the contract. We would have a sergeant from the sheriff's department assigned to the city of La Center to perform the city of police chief requirements and responsibilities. This is like a lot of other contract cities in the state that contract with the sheriff's department. Depending on the size of the city, is generally a sergeant, lieutenant, or commander that takes that position. We have eight deputies to staff the La Center beat. CISO is responsible for all recruitment, training, minimum staffing levels, and staffing of special events in the city. CISO would have detectives, bomb squad, K-9, SWAT, other services that they currently provide, they would provide to the city. We would have 24/7 supervisory oversight. This is very important because CISO, if our sergeant isn't on duty, a CISO, CISO deputy, or excuse me, a supervisor that's working the county could come in and handle an incident. And this would reduce risk management concerns and comply with the police reform laws. CISO would get, have all the administrative tasks. Remember, that would be professional, professional standards, doing administrative investigations, use of force investigations, property and evidence, records, all those things. We go over to CISO. They've got a much greater employee pool to fill short, long-term vacancies than we do. Although I know that they've, they've lost staffing like everybody else. It's much easier. They've still got a bigger pool than we would. And again, they assume all liability, and it would be a five-year contract with two five-year renewals. And either party could give notice in year four. So if people, you know, decide that they don't want to work with a sheriff's contract after, you know, after five years, we can give notice. If the economy changes in five years, if Amazon builds a server farm in La Center in five years, if we get all this money, whatever, we have the ability at the end of five years to rethink how we provide law enforcement services. This would, and I hope I'm not talking over anybody, but if anybody wants to speak up, go ahead. This is what the implementation costs. These are one-time costs, wouldn't exceed $1,050,000. That's for recruitment, higher salary benefits, equipment, training, vehicles. That's the startup cost. We would only pay startup cost payments based on hiring benchmarks. So we wouldn't pay all this money upfront. When they hired a person, we would pay for the body, the training, the car. We can offset these costs by transferring some of the equipment that we currently have in the police department, vehicles, our life scan machine, weapons. Vehicles, uh, our life scan machine, weapons, whatever it is that we can do. We can either transfer them to the sheriff and get credit against our startup cost, or we can sell them to another agency. And get credit back to go towards those startup costs. Now. The ongoing costs from years two, uh, two to five. Depending on what the contract rate is, and we said it, we said it that cola three to five percent. Well, in another slide, I admitted four. So you have an idea, but it would be about one-point-three million dollars a year. And then we would have to add our ongoing costs, which we already pay for, Cressa, we have to pay a SWAT bill. We have to pay utilities on this building. That's another ninety-five plus. So our contract would be about one-point-four million dollars. It would go up about four percent a year. And that includes everything. That includes records, after-hour records, which we currently have to pay extra now for. Property and evidence, which we pay for extra now and all administrative oversight. So why contract a CCSO? It gives us a long-term, uh, our long-term structural deficit is gonna continue. It's not going away soon and police departments aren't gonna get cheaper. It's not gonna get cheaper to run a police department. And if we don't fund to an adequate level, we're gonna continue to be underfunded, under-equipped, under-trained and understaffed. Because you're not gonna get quality employees, you're gonna get employees that have been rejected everywhere else. Because we don't have the budget nor the long-term uh, benefits of having promotional opportunities. Detectives, trafficking, and those kinds of things. And again, CCSO provides stable, efficient law enforcement services at a reduced cost while increasing coverage and reducing liability. And I think that's important because that gives the city breathing room to start looking at other uh, opportunities to increase. Uh, revenue resources or sit back and watch out uh, what happens with additional police reform legislation. Or the president is coming out with his executive orders pretty soon and that could uh, impact uh, police reform in our state. And obviously, uh, we, nobody knows what's gonna happen with our economy and so it gives us a breather on that a little bit. And finally, this is just a slide that shows you. If you look at uh, the orange line, that's what our budget is. Twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-six, if you added four percent a year. Now again, like I've explained to you before, twenty-twenty-two's budget, we front-loaded that with a lot of incentives. Uh, we're purchasing a couple of cars, recruitment bonuses of cheaply, a police chief recruitment. So our budget's two-point-one-six. We know that we won't need that much money in next year, so it's gonna go down at least two-hundred thousand dollars. So that's the one-point-nine you're seeing here. But then you start adding four percent a year increases to our budget. And if you do the same thing with the sheriff's department contract. This red line here is our savings every year. So at the end of. The end of the contract period, when you back out startup cost, our next, a net maximum savings is about one-point-four million dollars. And not only are we, is that the real, real money, but remember, we're out of the uh, we're out of the liability business, the recruitment business, the labor relations business. Investigations business, we're out of everything and all responsibility all falls on the county. And we're all open for questions or discussion.
Just wanna say thank you for your presentation. It looks like you did spend a good amount of time with all that. Um, I do however, have a few questions. Um. You know, one thing that pointed out right in the beginning, that just kinda caught my attention, what Sheriff had said, and I'm not trying to take this out of context at all, but he did say. You know, be able to provide service when we need it. And I think that's a big concern with going with the sheriffs for the community as it is right now. I mean, I do feel just working in the county as is, they probably are, you know, facing the same challenges with. Employment and fulfilling staffing levels as it is. So I'm just wondering like how, you know, if we did decide to try and bring this on and, and sort how, how they would be able to uh. Better suit the need to uh, you know, fulfill the staffing levels that are appropriate to take care of the center.
Let, let me ask, let me answer part of that question and then I'll turn it over to uh, John Horace. Uh, you're right, every police department in the United States is having recruitment issues. And that's why you see uh, you see these uh, twenty-five thousand dollar hiring bonuses now. Now, it doesn't matter, we try to ramp up a police department or the sheriff's department tries to ramp up staffing this patrol area. There's gonna be a, a timeframe for doing that. And we're gonna have a, have to have a workaround, which is kinda like what we have now. The workaround is paying officers to come in and work overtime in our city or relying on mutual aid. But we can't do that forever because they're already, I know we're already having uh, discussions in our uh, chiefs meetings in the county. About how long other cities are gonna have to provide mutual aid to the city of La Center. And I'm not talking about mutually where we pay for it, talking about the mutual aid where we don't pay for it. So yes, we would both have to ramp up. My uh, professional opinion is the sheriff's department has much greater ability to ramp up faster than we do. Just because we don't have the recruitment process, background investigators, we're gonna have to contract all that out, it's gonna cost more money. And at the end of the day, the applicant pool, and I looked at it, I look, we got, we had forty applications. We use a company called Public Safety Testing. Uh, they provide the written test. When you go in and take the written test with Public Safety Testing, you pay a fee. And for every agency that you check off, you pay more money. Well, most applicants that live in the southwest part of Washington. Will check off all the agencies and talents and Clark County because they wanna work somewhere. And so we had forty people in a year that, that marked La Center. Now, when you go in and you look at those forty applicants and you see that some of them have been in there a year. To a year, a little over a year and haven't been picked up by anybody, then you have to go in and read their background paperwork, which I do. And you can, and to be blunt, there's a reason why they haven't gotten picked up yet. So that is a challenge. Now, remember, once we get up to staffing the beat and we have everybody working the beat. The beat has to be staffed twenty-four-seven by contact, but you're, it's getting there. So and I'm gonna turn it over to John Horace and maybe he can talk about that a little bit.
I think someone has a question first.
Actually, Chief Horace, I, Janice Corbin here, I just wanna add something to the context here. The truth is that before our current vacancy rate, which happened last year in March, April and June. We had difficulty hiring and keeping officers. We hired, we had two vacancies when I first came on board. We had two vacancies due to disciplinary action. We hired and not two officers. Both of those officers left us. After their training and went to Ridgefield and one of the reasons was there was more activity. We hired two more officers. One of those officers wanted, was practicing or was law enforcement in Oregon. And didn't wanna commute to Washington. And one of those officers was let go from another police agency in the field training program and we picked them up. We also tried to hire an officer because there was nobody on that list that was hirable. And I know some of you talked to the former chief and, and if he's being truthful with you, he will tell you that. He was very frustrated with trying to recruit people because there's just not enough police work, one. Number two, there wasn't an opportunity for upward mobility. And so the last candidate that, that Chief Denny tried to hire was out of the county, by the way. Uh, an officer who was in the Department of Corrections. And we brought him over, we did training, we brought, bought him a vest and all sorts of stuff. And he took a job with another agency. So part of the issue is. That recruitment was a problem before this big issue now, which is entirely different. In that we have a big resignation going on. We have a hundred and eighty-some vacancies in the state of Washington as of Monday. For law enforcement positions and Portland is gonna be hiring, so that's gonna be having an effect. Again, a larger agency, any larger agency, has the ability to retain for upward mobility. And attractiveness because of the diversity of the law enforcement that you can do. So that's the truth of the matter. And I know one of the community members who was online tonight talked about, we had forty-two people. Apply for the city of La Center. No, they just checked the box on the, on the uh, public safety. Uh, testing process that they would consider it, but when Chief Denny was here, by the time he got the list. Most of the candidates had been selected and or chose a larger department. So that's what's particularly challenging right now. This is not a new problem for recruiting. It's a different situation because we have more positions vacant right now, but we've had a problem for some time. That's true for all small law enforcement agencies in the states. That's my two cents. I will step out.
Janice, it's, this is Liz Servini and it's been a historical problem for La Center. Um, even when I was mayor in the early nineteen nineties, the same issues held true. And even if we would go to the extent of bringing on new hires. The, the officers would leave after a year, two years maximum, when they had the opportunity to go elsewhere. Be, because those other agencies did offer um, more advancement opportunities than we ever could. And, and that hasn't changed and with the community makeup that we have, it's not going to change. Um, the community will always be small in comparison to everything else that we're surrounded by. And it's gonna be an ongoing struggle and an ongoing cost and expense um, for us to even try to battle.
Yeah, and, and we weren't able to offer a specialty pay. And during the last contract negotiations, and I think I'm the only person who was present for that, of everybody who's on the, online. During the last co- contract negotiations, I wanted and offered a school resource officer. This was before some of the issues that have current, recently happened because we have such strong schools here. Um, that we would have a, a school resource officer. And in fact, one of the officers that I thought would be really good at that. Left and went to Ridgefield shortly after that, but the union did not want a school resource officer. They wanted more money for themselves and not a specialty in that manner. So those are the facts, folks. And you know, I know that people won't agree with that, but you know, I have supporting meditation and. And others that tells you that, that's been the struggles we've had. Both recruiting, again, not new, as Councilmember Servini said, but we are going to train them and lose them. And that's, that's okay if you have a fat budget and you can handle that, but we're not gonna be able to do it otherwise and. Um, we're not gonna be able to give them the diversity. That's part of the fun of law enforcement. Is being able to have diversity in the kind of policing that you do, whether that's SWAT. Or being able to work in, you know, CSI work, if you will, evidence. Patrol, which is really one of the best jobs going. So that's one of the challenges for all agencies right now. It's just more difficult right now. Where a larger agency like the county, Deputy Sheriff's Department, there is that diversity with experience and time. And I think one of our council members who is a deputy knows that or is a commander there.
Hey, thank you, Janice. Yeah, so John, if you wanna pick it up from here.
Well, I'll chime in. I won't talk too long. I know it's gone on an hour. A lot of good comments were just made. The last two people that spoke were, were true comments. But I will tell you, um, uh, the state of the Clark County Sheriff's Office. By the way, when Bob Richardson had just once and started these talks with us, uh, about a year ago, maybe a little less. We moved through it, um, and we were looking like, uh, we'd met with our counselors and long story short, everything was looking like it was. A very good thing for both uh, La Center and the sheriff's office. Uh, however, what happened was in the end of the summer, early fall, we started to see a huge uh, drastic. Increase in retirements and people leaving for several, for numerous reasons. And we're seeing that across the state of Washington, but. Leaving the state and the sheriff's offices also, uh, we got to a point where we thought we could provide one, at least one person. A sergeant by the end of the year or by July and that became where we had discussions where we were so low on staffing. Uh, that we couldn't in good conscience say, yes, we can absolutely one-hundred percent do that. And so at the end of the year and even right now, we've had more retirements and I, I honestly believe, I don't think we had one person apply at the sheriff's office last month. And so we are in the same state, so that's why we had this, we were not against this plan. If there was a, I think we, I presented, it was in uh, November or December, I believe. Um, why we had this pause on the sheriff's office and because we can't, if we don't have the personnel, we can't, we can't go into a commitment with somebody, that's not right. And so we have this problem right now, that is a true fact. And I don't know when we're gonna get out of it. We will eventually, uh, it will have a turnaround. Like all police agencies here, but the sheriff mentioned or we were talking about incentives. And right now, we're working with the county to try to get our packages uh, comparable and, and those incentives, everybody in the county. Uh, other agencies are doing it except Clark County. And so, yes, the state of the Clark County Sheriff's Office right now is, we are hurting for bodies as well. We are scrambling. We have more retirements on, on, coming. We have a few people in training. I think we have four to six people that are waiting to go to the academy, but that's eight to nine months before they're actually done. Or done and actually on the road. Uh, in the meantime, we lose more people. So I know four more sergeants that are retiring here shortly. So that is a kind of the state of why we had this pause with the sheriff's office. It's not that we had any issues with it. Um, there was nothing going on there and I would love to say we could commit one body in, you know, May or June or July. I'd love to even say that and I can't with good, in good face, say that right now. In three, four, five, six months from now, I, I mean, it could be worse or it could be better. We could be coming out of a little bit. I don't know those answers. But it would give us a little time, uh, late, late spring, early, uh, early summer to see where we're at. We, we've changed our recruiting. We revamped recruiting last year. We changed our website. We're, we're desperately going out there and trying to find bodies. They are just not applying right now. And so uh, we had seven laterals come from Portland in the last two years and that has dried up uh, for numerous reasons. So. I've seen this before, I've, in, in law enforcement about twenty-five years ago and that people jump ship at different times and law enforcement goes through trends like this. Um, and right now in Washington, I believe if they correct some of the laws that they did last year, there will be a, kind of a, maybe some hemorrhaging will stop. But it still takes time to build that back up. So that's kind of a long-winded answer saying, we're hurting as well. We don't have a body that provide right now, but um, we would wanna be in this agreement. I think it's a great thing for both parties involved, but. But uh, it's something that we just can't in good conscience today say that we can do it. Is there any questions?
Flip side, but the flip side is that we, if La Center won't be able to hire either. And that you still will be a larger department. We have three officers. One officer is being backgrounded now to move out of state. One officer is on military leave and that leaves one officer period. And you can't do policing with one officer. And contrary to some information that is being put out there. There is an information that there was a law on the books that would be flexible with retirement. So some of the people retiring out of the sheriff's department could be hired as La Center officers. Here's the facts. That law is just introduced in the Senate. It is not even close to the governor's office. It hasn't gone through committee and it hasn't been discussed in the House. And it is not a priority compared to the police reform. So those are the facts about that piece as well.
I guess I wanna say is, I'm not here to make an argument for La Center. I'm giving the facts on our end, but those are true. I, I'm not disagreeing with them, uh, but that's not my job. That, it's La Center Council to decide what direction, but, but those are true facts as well or. Or could be. It depends on how you do it, how they wanna look at it. So I'm not, I'm giving you the state of, the state of the sheriff's office.
Yeah, and I'm not here to argue the one way or the other either. I'm just saying that's the facts. You're having difficulty in the sheriff's department. We've historically had difficult, as Councilmember Servini said, and we're gonna be less competitive in that way.
So yes, staffing is definitely an issue um, going forward for. Clark County, um, the entire state of Washington and quite frankly, it's a national problem. So. You know, the question for the council really is, is which path do we wanna go down? And you know, again, I think when you look at the total package that the, that's available to the city with contracting to CCSO. And that's, of course, there is a cost benefit to the city, but there's also a liability issues. Um, you know, all the HR resources. city, but there's also liability issues. Um, you know, all the HR resources that would be available to um the city through county. Um, so yes, I do believe that staffing is gonna be a problem regardless if we're working with this Sheriff's Office or if we go on our own. But if, if we are going to sail the ship, we gotta, you know, pick uh, correct uh which one we're gonna pick. And again, I think for the long-term benefit of the city, uh, working with CCSO was a better alternative. We're gonna end up at a better spot two or three years from now. But it's definitely gonna be a challenge regardless short term, how we're gonna staff for the next uh months to a year. So um, so all those issues will have um budget impacts as well. However, again, we have to make a choice as to which direction, which choice we're going to make. And I do think that you really look at not just the uh cost benefit to the city, but all the other benefits. Working with CCSO is um, gives us a lot better alternative. Um, with that being said, uh, you know, it is, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, John. It, it's gonna be a very, very challenging here near, near term. And, you know, Le Center is still relying heavily on mutual aid. But like Chief Richardson spoke earlier, uh, that's going to be more, more challenging if the city isn't able to participate more actively with that. But again, uh, that's something that CCSO will be able to uh work out better with other agencies rather than Le Center, if we don't have anybody to really contribute. There's a lot of uh benefits to go on with CCSO. Uh, short term, it's gonna be a challenge regardless of which, which way we go.
I'd like to bring up another point that I think um, from the community perspective, there's the misperception that we have had the 24/7 coverage in the past. And, and, you know, that, that's a false uh perception of, from the community. Um, we have not been able to staff to a point where we have had the 24/7 coverage. And that's um been true for many years. But the presence of, of the community, seeing the police cars, you know, and just the daily presence during the day, and then the occasional drive-bys gave the misperception that there was that higher level of coverage that existed when in fact, um, you know, as you can see from staffing, as well as the number of calls, that never really was in place. And I think by looking at the, the opportunities that we have with the CCSO contract would give us a much higher and a much more professional level of coverage because it would be, um, you know, when we get to that staffing level, it would be much more consistent with the assignment of those beats. Um, and I think, you know, that, that's where I have um some positive feelings and, and leanings to get to the point where the growing community has increasing expectations year over year. And I, I think that's the only way we can get to that level of service. Um, because we certainly won't be able to get there with the revenue generation. Um, simply when you look at the limited um commercial property that we have, that we can even develop, get developed, we'll never get to that point. So that's where I have a little heartburn when you look at the pros and cons that we're faced with at the city level.
Um, I'd like to jump in there again. You know, I, you know, I appreciate what everybody's saying, but I think we're too much focused on what's happened in the past. I mean, we gotta be forward, future-looking and, you know, trying to come up with solutions that are gonna be beneficial. I mean, uh, Mr. Horch said it right there that they're not able to meet the demands of what the contract was gonna be for the foreseeable future. I mean, six to eight months, there's a lot can change between now and then. So I, in my opinion, it just, things that I've heard from the community, like people want a Le Center Police Department, and however we figure that out, it's gonna, we need to start looking at all the options. I mean, this, the CCSO is a, you know, there's definitely a lot of pros to it. I see cons in it as well. But I think we need to be looking at all the options and not so um, you know, center-focused on this one deal because I don't think we've really looked to any other direction at this point.
Councilmember Boyle, let me ask you, what, what would you recommend we do?
Well, uh, the chairman of the Kalis Tribe, they have seventeen officers right now, and they're actually interested in uh possibly working together and coming up with some sort of cross-deputi- deputization of some sorts. And I mean, that's an option we can look at first off.
Okay. Let me speak on that really quick. I had met with the chief of police there, uh, John Pound. He wasn't interested in doing that. I met with him in December. I can tell you that if you talk to WCIA or AWC or insurance carriers, they're gonna tell you, do not sign any kind of agreement with the tribe. Uh, because the tribe is a sovereign nation, and you can't sue them. And they backed out of other law enforcement contracts in the state of Washington, where they were supposed to pick up a liability uh over a corrections uh facility. And when somebody died in their corrections facility from a jurisdiction, and the jurisdiction said, hey, you have a liability on this. They said, no, we don't. We're not gonna honor the contract. So uh, we've looked at that. Uh, we looked at a high bread solution. Uh, Sheriff's Department not interested in doing that. Uh, we've talked to Woodland. Woodland would not work. They're on two totally different records and CAD systems. And uh, it would be a tremendous uh operational uh issue to have Woodland officers coming into the center and having to deal with a completely different uh dispatch center, totally different record system, uh filing their paperwork in, in prosecutors' offices that they don't deal with, a battleground municipal court. I mean, we've looked at all these. And where I get, I'm gonna, I'm a little frustrated. Uh, I've been here a year, and no council members ever come to me and ask me anything. And I think it's time uh that I understand.
Before I was even on council, I did reach out to you twice, and we had a couple.
We had a phone call. With, I, I, council members. I said, council, you aren't a council member then. So I think uh, we can't start up a police department. We're not gonna start up a police department overnight. It's gonna take us much longer than the Sheriff's Department. And quite honestly, uh, at the end of the day, you're gonna run out of money here in about five or six years. Because you're, you're, we were a, over a million dollar, we had a million dollar deficit in this last budget. And the only reason we got it down to eight hundred thousand, and we're talking about the total general fund, is we used federal bailout money to get our deficit down. That, that, we're gonna be between eight hundred and a million dollars every year. So you've gotta figure out, uh, how are you gonna sustain not only the police department, but all the city services? Because if you put all your money into the police department, there's not enough money to run the city, and you still don't have enough money.
Okay. First of all, that is not a true statement. We are not gonna run a deficit of eight hundred to a million dollars a year, Mr. Richardson. So uh, that being said, I will have to uh interject and also stand up with Sean as that goes. Um, I, I do believe that we need to rebuild our police force at this point. Um, Mr. Horch had already said that they can't do it in a timely manner. And uh, that really doesn't leave us much of a choice but to rebuild and go forward with it.
Councilmember Strobin, how do you possibly think we could accomplish that any quicker?
So, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Go ahead.
How do you believe we can, as a city, can accomplish that any quicker and financially support it?
Well, as I've stated before, and people had told me, no, it can't be true. Uh, we can still operate our police station or police force for the same cost of the sheriff that's presenting to us. And I do believe that. And that's from my conversations with other police forces uh in the state of Washington and around.
Not true.
So, um, and you contend, you continue to say that. But uh, from my conversations with him, it was true.
Skip me just a second. I'm gonna interject something here, Councilmember Strobin. So I'm looking at the 2022 budget right now, and uh, it's right off the city website. It shows an eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four deficit for 2022. That's what is in the budget right now. So uh, what Chief Richardson said is in fact accurate. He's also accurate in when he said that the city of Le Center in 2021, we received uh approximately nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in art money, American Rescue Plan money. And that was split over two years. So in 2021, the city uh included in their general fund revenue approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And in 2022, um, we incorporated another four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Those are one-time revenue streams that will only last up through this year. So if you were to add, take that money away from the general fund revenue, the 2022 general fund deficit as budgeted right now on the city website would be 1.3 million dollars. That's on the heels of having a budget deficit in 2018 of, in excess of four hundred thousand dollars, a budget deficit in 2019 of excess of four hundred thousand dollars. In 2020, the city's deficit was nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And in 2021, we do not have the actual um, the financials have not been closed off for the city. But again, because of that um, uh, art money, the American Rescue Plan, the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for 2021, it probably will prevent the city from going into a deficit for 2021. But when the budget was passed and for 2021, uh, that did include a budget deficit of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So these deficits are real. The deficit is very real. And as Jeff Swanson pointed, or excuse me, Jeff Swanson pointed out earlier, the um, the trend is definitely going, the expenditures are going to exceed revenues for the foreseeable future. And um, so I do, I want to make sure that the council understands that these deficits are real. The revenue streams for the city are extremely under a lot of pressure right now. And again, we are not the council of just the police department. This is the city council for the entire city. We're responsible for public works that includes transportation, parks and trails, community development. The city also has a wastewater treatment plant. We have a stormwater utility. There's a lot of pressure on the city to provide all these different services. And the police department is only one. And right now, the police department consumes the largest percentage of the general fund deficit. The city has gone through a very deliberative and detailed um, uh, analysis of all the other departments in the city over the past few years. We've made great improvements with cutting expenditures to the very best that we can. The police department was the last department that the city's taken a hard look at. And this is where we are today. So again, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that um, you know, the financial situation that the city is in, and where are um, in foreseeable future, what we anticipate is gonna happen with our revenue streams. Go ahead, Councilmember Strobin.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, I know what the deficits were. I was one of the council members that uh voted against the budget processes or the budgets that were presented to us in 2019, 2018 as well. Um, those were all deemed, you know, 2020 was also deemed because of the card room. The card room revenue was down. Um, and it's still somewhat down. So are these revenue projections accurate? It's on, it, you, you can't tell right now. Um, and then as far as I last heard, I think uh, the New Phoenix or something had sold. George Tierney had sold. I'm not sure. I don't know what their future plans are. Hopefully the city has inquired about that and has some information about it. But that also can present uh opportunities for the city and revenue streams as well. Sorry, my wife is waving goodnight to me.
Yeah, those are all unknowns right now. So Councilmember Boyle, you brought up the Kalis uh Police Department a little bit ago. Have you had any discussions with any of the uh law enforcement officials at Kalis Tribe? Where did you get your information from?
No, I spoke with the chairman.
The chairman being who? Which chairman did you talk to? The current chairman, previous chairman?
Dave Barnett.
Okay. So you've had discussions with um Dave Barnett regarding the Le Center Police Department?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Has any other council members had any discussions with Dave Barnett, chairman of the Kalis Indian Tribe regarding the Center Police Department? Okay. And so it was Chairman Barnett that said that he would be interested in entering into an agreement with the city of Le Center?
Yes, it was not discussed in full disclosure, but he was interested in that.
Okay.
And the COO was there as well to back that up.
And who was the CEO, COO that you spoke with?
I'll show you. You're putting me on the spot. I gotta remember names.
It's pretty important. If you're representing the city and talking to official.
And Caputo, sorry.
Okay. And Councilmember Strobin, you mentioned that you've talked to other agencies, other police departments. You're definitely questioning the numbers that have been provided this evening. What other agencies, other officials have you spoken to regarding your, the information that you're presenting tonight?
The information that I presented to you tonight, and uh, actually, it was in November, I believe, um, was uh, what was it? It was Woodland, uh, Chief Denny, and uh Moses Lake. Stuff that we discussed in the previous uh meetings.
Who would you talk to in Woodland?
Uh, I don't remember the lady's name.
Was she a police officer, chief, administrator?
I, I would assume an administrator. She could have been a police officer. I just asked her questions on their budgets. And that's what my questions were pertaining to, was how, how their operating costs were.
Okay. And who in Moses Lake did you talk to?
Uh, whoever had answered the phone. Probably an administrator.
So you're basing your opinion on talking to whomever?
Basing my opinion on talking to people that operate police departments, Mayor. Please don't discount my, my information of, of research.
I know. But which people have you talked to that operate police departments? You've talked to maybe an administrator, maybe a police officer?
I talked to Chief Denny as one of them.
Yeah.
Who's operated several different police uh, uh, offices.
Okay. And he shared with you that, that, what was the information that he provided you?
He provided me the same information that I provided you. He said that we could do it for what the sheriffs are, are presenting to us. That the city could do that.
And was he talking specifically with, was he comparing apples to apples? Was he talking a chief, two sergeant, eight patrol officers?
Yes.
Two, yes?
Yes, yes. I went over it with him.
So how could his numbers be any different than the numbers presented by Chief Richardson? Because we're just using our current collective bargaining agreement numbers, current pay scales for officers. I mean, over seventy-five percent of the budget for police department is just salary and benefits. I don't.
Well, actually, that number jumped up, Mayor. That first number that we got in September was 1.9. And then uh, I believe Councilmember Hill had questioned if that was the true number or not. And the next numbers that we got were 2.1. So those numbers have uh been moved around a few times.
Well, things keep escalating as well. I, I would think that the numbers are even escalating more than when we started several months ago. So I'll leave it there. Chief Richardson, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Number one, uh, you can't have a chief, uh, two sergeants, and whether it's seven or eight police officers, uh, total, total of eight employees or nine police employees, what the Sheriff's Department's providing service for. It's impossible. Just the police chief's uh total compensation is almost 200,000. So uh, that, that won't work out. Those numbers don't work. The numbers came directly out of what you said, the CBA and the salaries. The reason it jumped up is exactly why I presented in my, my budget. Remember, we're adding another police officer's position, a part-time employee, some recruitment bonuses, and some cars. Well, when you add all that up, that's at least three or four hundred thousand dollars. So uh, you know, I can go back through the detail, but you, you, there's no way you're gonna staff a fully-staffed police department like Le Center is for the cost that the Sheriff's Department provides. is for the cost that the sheriff's department provides.
I have a question. Or I guess a comment. I've spoken to John Chapman. He's a good family friend of ours. And he said that he spoke with the police chief in Woodland and that he was interested in potentially doing a hybrid approach. You're just, you're speaking of technological issues and software, it sounds like. Is, is that really the only holdup?
Well, number one, remember, the chief does not speak for the city of Woodland. You know, you, you'd have to, the agreement you would do with the city of Woodland would have to be with the city of Woodland. They're having the same.
I don't know if you know who John Chapman is. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just want to make sure. I didn't know if you know who that is.
Yeah, I know. I know everybody over at the sheriff's department. I know John, of course, John Chapman, the sheriff. So yes, Chief Kelly, who's the Woodland Police Chief, and I spoke at the Waspit Conference in November, and we had a conversation, a very brief conversation. But remember, his conversation was between he and I, didn't involve his mayor, the city administrator or the city council. So that's one thing we have to look at. And logistic issues are a big issue because they are understaffed too. They have the same problems we do. So, and.
Yeah, so does.
Yeah, yeah. But it, it's a lot more seamless process with the county because they already do our records, our evidence. We're on the same record system. We're on the same CAD system. We use the same courts except for battleground muni court. So it is a little bit different. So, yeah, we can look at that. But I can tell you right now, it's not going to be cheaper than the sheriff's department, probably. It could be, but we're gonna have to see. And first, we'd have to get, is there any political backing for that even to happen? Remember that the chief is just talking, he can't represent what the city council wants to do. The contract has got to be with the city council.
Okay, I understand that. But if Clark County says they only maybe have one, and I came at the end, I'm sorry, I had to work up until the one minute. So I planned on kind of going back to refresh, but it sounded like you said he maybe would have maybe one officer available at times. And Woodland has got to maybe have equal or more than that because they're closer. And hopefully, they, you know, haven't seen some of the.
I, I think you took them out of context. I think what John Horace was saying that they would try, you know, it would take them, it could take them six to eight months to get a sergeant on board. That's what the gist of his conversation was. And obviously, it could take longer than that. But remember, we're not in any better position, quite frankly, because we're going to be down to two people here pretty soon. And that's one sergeant and one officer that's deployed. So it's going to take a lot of money in order to ramp the place back up because we're going to have to hire off some hiring bonuses. And we could be in the same position. Remember that we may not, just like Janice Corbin said, we have a history here of being very difficult to recruit qualified applicants that can pass a background.
That's the issue of passing a background or they're interested in actually coming in here altogether?
Well, I think both.
Right, and that's a problem because of the, the past reputation we've created for ourselves in the news and all other places.
Well, I don't, I don't know about what you mean by that, but I can tell you that this, I've been here, I've been, I was here when Tim Hopkins was the chief. And you guys had problems back then recruiting people. And then remember that you guys, the city had to terminate two, two police employees here for misconduct. So that kind of tells you that they were probably hiring whoever they could. You know, because the applicant pool, there wasn't a lot of people applying here. And so you've got to hire what you can, and it's even worse now. And so like I said, I've looked through these backgrounds of some of the people that check the box for La Center. And I can tell you just off the background, some of the people have convictions that we wouldn't, we wouldn't let them be police officers. Because remember, anybody can take the test for public safety testing. So, but I, but again, if you're directing it from the council, if you go look at Woodland, we'd be more, you know, I'll go look at Woodland and we'll come back and see what they say. The mayor's got to make that decision, but we'll look.
Hey, chief, this is Casey Casper. Can I jump in here just a second? You know, the the mayor put out the question earlier that was, we have to pick a path forward. But we haven't seen a viable path presented yet. You guys have put in all kinds of reasons why La Center should not have a police department. And those reasons had started far before any of us were ever involved in this. But my opinion is that Chief Horace's statement on when the sheriff's office can even participate in this is, is optimistic at best. I, I, I don't see the sheriff's office being able to provide any staffing very likely in two thousand and twenty two because there are no people applying for our jobs. So yes, you, you have very valid points that the sheriff's office has more to offer than a police department like La Center. But at this point in time, that's, that's not attracting anybody. And so I, I, I think to choose a path based on, on two unviable options is where I'm struggling to, to keep up with what our conversation is about tonight.
I understand that. And I, I can tell you, I'm frustrated just like you are because there is no easy solution. You know, Ridgefield would have been the nice solution, but for, there were reasons why the chief was for it and other people were against it. So Ridgefield was out. Woodland, we can go talk to them as long as the, their council and their mayor and the city administrator are behind that or we're wasting our time just talking to the police chief because again, he doesn't have the authority to, to make that decision. The College Tribe, I talked to John Pound about that. In December, we had lunch, we talked about it. He wasn't interested in doing it based on the funding model and some other things. But we can still, you know, my concern with.
And I'm not sure they're even general law enforcement certified yet, so that may not.
They are.
Oh, they, okay.
Yeah, all the, they're, they're all are general certified, but they do have some issues. And again, we have issues with what our insurance carrier is going to say. Because, you know, you're signing, signing a contract with somebody and you've got to be very careful. You know how it is with sovereign nation. They're, they can, they can either say sue us or not. But with that being said, I'm open to, remember, I came here a year ago and told people, I'm open to, to suggestions, which directions you want to go. We're running out of options. And so my only concern is if we start ramping up and start hiring employees to work here, it's going to take three or four, it's going to take, I would say, three to four years to get fully staffed. If nobody leaves and everybody makes probation in the academy and no, nobody leaves after a couple of years of being here. And then we, the other question we have is what's ethical? Is it ethical to hire employees knowing that there's some potential that they may be out of a job before they even get out of the academy? I don't know the answer to that because anybody we hire today probably isn't going to get to academy till June and they won't get through FTO training till next year at this time. So I'm open to suggestions, Casey, just like everything else. But I don't want people to, at the end of the day, remember that everything's got to do with money. And if we're spending eight hundred to a million dollars a year in a deficit, we're spinning our general fund surplus down, the carbon revenue is down. And so we have to figure out, okay, where do we go? So that's the question.
Chief, I completely agree with you. I, I think that you hit the nail on the head when you said that funding is, is the issue. And personally, I would have rather spent the last hour or so talking about how, how we can jumpstart the development at the junction or whatever any delays are that we're, that we're facing to start getting new businesses and, and new funding coming into the, into the city. You know, ultimately, it may be the sheriff's office that is the best option. But at, at this point, we're going to be stuck with what we have for, for quite a while. I just don't see how the sheriff's office will fulfill those needs. And then if we don't fix the revenue situation, then even that won't be a, an option for us.
I completely agree, Casey.
So council, let's make, I'd like to propose that we have a work session. I'd like to schedule something for Wednesday, February second, to have a work session that will talk specifically about the budget, budget deficit. We can talk about revenue streams and really get a better understanding of where we are financially. And then we can incorporate that back into the conversation we had earlier. And also, Casey, if you, I mean, you, you raise a very interesting question, dynamic here, like, you know, you know, given the two options we have, how is one going to be any better than the other, given the current staffing challenges that all agencies are having across the state? But do you see any benefit with the city pursuing their own staffing versus the CCSO?
I would say no, as long as there's a current collective bargaining agreement. I think if the city decides to, to pursue its own police department staffing, I think it would need to start brand new. I would suggest starting with a recruitment for a chief that might be willing to start from anew and build a department from the ground up.
Okay, so let's do this. Council, we've been at this for hour and a half. I think we've raised a lot of good questions here this evening. I would like to pursue the, the budget component of this more in depth. Jeff, what's your, what is everybody's availability for Wednesday, February second?
I can look that up real quick. With respect to the development question, though, about the junction, if I can share my screen, I want to show you a quick slide here. There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we're fine.
All right. Sorry, I got a rambunctious dog here too. So what you're looking at, this is a slide from the fall budget presentation. And it shows you that with one hundred room hotel at the junction, a hundred unit apartment complex, and we have one of those that will be about a hundred and fifty units under construction, fourteen thousand, six hundred square feet of retail space, that's proposed up at the junction. The total annual city tax revenue is ninety seven thousand, five hundred dollars. There's lodging tax of a hundred thousand, but lodging tax is a restricted fund. There are certain uses under statute for that revenue stream. So basically, all that development won't even pay for one full-time employee in the police department at ninety seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So while development is part of making our finances more sustainable, and, and recall that if you have development, you also have to provide services to it. So there's a cost component to new development. The ongoing revenues are not the salve for the wound that you may be assuming they are.
Oh, no, I wasn't making any assumptions because as the mayor said earlier, we have a whole city to run and our revenue has been declining regularly. So when I spoke with the mayor not too long ago, one of the things that we had brought up was getting the revenue coming back into the city regardless of what the amounts are at the time. But let's, let's solve our money problems and, and then start working on the other things that we need help with.
Right. And, and I will also put out there that in the current environment with steep inflation, the hundred-room hotel, which we expected to break ground last year, was put on hold because labor and materials costs went up and changed the financing equation for the investors. So, you know, the development question is not one that's going to be answered in a year or two. It's more like a five to ten to fifteen year type of an issue. So if you're looking for like an overnight financial windfall through development, it's not on the horizon. It's a long, steady slog.
The additional aspect that we need to keep in mind also gets into the steep inflation and the, the wage increases that we're also going to be faced with when we get back into union negotiations with our other employees as well. So, you know, there's a number of ongoing expenses that we're going to need to factor into all of our decisions as we look at maintaining each of the, the departments within the city overall operations. So that's not going to go away either.
Well, I definitely like the mayor's suggestion of meeting next week and talking more in depth about that.
Let's see, council, let's, if we could, I know it's short notice, but we can check on everyone's availability. Well, first of all, Chief Richardson, are you available for the Wednesday meeting, February second?
I'm checking right now, sir.
Okay. And I'll just go down the list here. Council member Boyle, are you available for the second?
Yes, I am, mayor.
Council member Fox?
I'm sorry, I've already answered a couple of times. I don't know if you're waiting for me. It sounds like there's some kind of echo, but I've, I've said I'm available, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not hear that. Council member Casper?
Yes, I am available.
Council member Servani?
Yes.
And council member Strobin?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we will schedule another work session for Wednesday, February second. The topic will be budget review, revenue streams. And we can also include some part in there about deficits. I mean, excuse me, development. And then I clearly, we need some more training on roles and responsibilities as well. And I'd like to get that scheduled here as soon as possible. And I'll ask the city clerk to send out a due to poll on that as well. So we get a date set, date certain for that as well for some additional training there. So just wanted to hear from you, Jeff, on your availability.
Yes, mayor, I am available on the, on the second.
Very good. I'm sorry, chief.
I, I'm also available, sir. That's, I had, I had Calgary, I had that, your town hall that night, so I'm, I'm available.
Yeah, no, I'll just, we'll do this in lieu of my town hall. Okay, and then Janice, are you available that evening as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll get that set up, council. Again, these are very challenging issues for the city to address. You know, I appreciate everybody's willingness to work through that. But it's going to be, it's going to be quite the process here. I see that Sheriff's, John Horace Sheriff's Office has left meeting. I didn't get a chance to thank him for his input tonight, but we'll continue visiting with them. And we'll just take it from there. Any other questions or comments from the council before we adjourn this work session this evening?
Yeah, I just want to say to Chief Richardson, I, I'm not discrediting any of the information that you provided today. And I appreciate what you have seen. I guess my mere thought is that, you know, I was elected to represent everybody in the city and that's where I'm coming from with a lot of this. And I just want to make sure that we are looking throughout all possible opportunities. And that's just where I'm coming from. So hopefully, you know, we can work through this and come out with a, you know, positive outcome that, you know, benefits the city. And that's, to me, the only thing that's important. That, you know, benefits the city and that's, to me, the only thing that's important.
I, I don't disagree, council member. I apologize. I get passionate about law enforcement. Been doing it for forty-some years and so, and uh, you know, I'm more than, I'm more than happy to reach out. Uh, you know, I've done the, I've done the circuit. I've talked to every police department that were around here asking, would you like to come in and? Uh, help out or uh, I, I even sent an email out uh, yesterday asking two agencies that are participating. In our overtime shifts if they'd be willing to do that, so uh, I'm willing to look at any avenue you guys uh, suggest.
Thank you.
Okay, um, one last time, any other questions, comments before we adjourn? Okay, council, thank you very much for your time this evening. Again, I wanna thank the guests that have joined us as well for, for their uh, listening in. And of course, staff, I appreciate all your hard work and effort as we continue to work through this very challenging issue, these very challenging issues. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn. We'll get the meeting scheduled for the work session for February second. And then we'll be having our city council meeting tomorrow evening. Thank you again, council.